It is six P M. We will go ahead and call the school board meeting to order this Monday, June ninth. First item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. Flags are at my right. Thank you. We have President Berger joining us by phone this evening for everyone's knowledge. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Oops, sorry. Back one. Reading of the school board meeting norms, Amber.
Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation in conversation, be professional at the board table when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Now on to item number two, approval of the agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Palmasino, second by Mr. Manley for approval of the agenda. We'll take a roll call vote. Motion passes. Item three on the agenda is public comments. I do not at this time have any blue public comment cards. Anyone in the audience here for public comment? I don't think so. So, okay, we will move on to item number four, superintendent's recommendations for discussion. Item four A is update on child nutrition. I will turn this over to Brandon.
Thank you, members of the board. I'm here just to introduce Wendy Manke, Director of Child Nutrition. She's here to give an update on the child nutrition program. You've heard some of these statistics and updates before, but this year we get to layer in that exciting update or relocation of the central kitchen, so she'll be talking a little bit about that as well. So Wendy, take it away.
I did not feel, I did not follow instructions very well, Cindy. Good evening, guys. President Berger, I know he's on the phone, and board members, and any guests. My name is Wendy Manke, and I am the Director of Child Nutrition, and I have to say it's been a quick four years. So I was asked to speak about child nutrition today. Wasn't quite sure what, so I'm going to have a few slides on numbers, a few on just what child nutrition is and kind of about, and then some goals that I have for the future. Okay, let's see if I can do this. Okay, child nutrition, twenty-four, twenty-five. Flew right by. Every single school year, I think, flies by. I constantly learn something all the time. I am a dietitian, and so coming from hospital work and nursing homework to nutrition here, a whole different world. So I learn constantly, and a challenge. It's always good to have a challenge. So I just threw out some information for you guys today. So based on about seventy-six hundred students is what I saw. So school breakfast this year was up from last year, and then I compared it to seventeen, eighteen as well. I don't really know why it's up. I just want to say it's our better breakfasts and our stunning personalities. But it goes with the national average that shows that breakfast participation is up. So I really don't have a good explanation, but I really would like to check on trends and see, you know, in my next years to see how that does go. So, you know, it could be parents need to get to work, could be social aspects, could be something fun happening in that school. So it'd be fun to kind of keep a trend on, but I appreciate the increased participation. School lunch is up from last year, but it is down from seventeen, eighteen. Again, I don't have really a good explanation. I was not here in seventeen, eighteen. The menu seemed to be still the same for school lunch because we just started changing it a little bit the year before, a little more this year, and it'll be a lot more next year. So I think it gets harder because we have open campuses, and so to get the kids to stay. So I just had a Central graduate this last weekend, and I always scroll and ask him through his TikTok so I can keep track of what kids like nowadays and see if I can make it school appropriate. So hopefully we can keep that trend going and try to keep them on campus to eat. Free reduced price meals, so eligible for free and reduced price meals this year was thirty-eight percent. I want to say it's increased this year because we had a lot of hands on deck from ground forces, public schools, that I totally appreciate helping fill out free reduced apps, getting people on the computer to help out, getting in many different languages as well. So it really was a village this year to help and fill out those free reduced apps. So I appreciate everybody's work on that. I had to throw in the negative balance. When I first started in twenty-one, twenty-two, it was negative fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents. And this year we ended at eighty-four thousand, and we did pay off quite a few balances as well throughout the year with donations. So that's what it was as of May twenty-seventh. This is my slides of just kind of how child nutrition programs work. So we are part of federal government program. There is Congress, the USDA, and the Department of Health and Human Services. And so you've all heard about that in the news lately because of Kennedy. And so a lot of those things that come from Department of Health and Human Services, USDA, it goes to the state, your state to be administered. Then they tell us how we're gonna do it, gives us the tools, and we operate them. And then hopefully at the school levels, then you get to feel the benefits of what's coming down the pipe. Congress sets our funding levels, and those usually come out in January. The USDA distributes those federal funds to the state, and the state will deposit them into our accounts. Sometimes they have extra money as well, and so it's based on our student participation a lot of times. So if they say they get sixteen million dollars to purchase white milk, then they can say Wendy can get five thousand dollars, Minna gets ten thousand, that kind of thing. So that's how we get some of our money as well. We are reimbursed some of our funds by reimbursement rates that also come out every January. It's around January first, and so if we serve a reimbursable meal, and let's just say for a free participating child, we would get a four dollars and fifty-two cents back on that reimbursable meal. And again, for reduced paid, the state, two-hundred and state reduced is our free meals that they did the hundred, two-hundred percent poverty line two years ago. And so if they meet that, then they can get a, they get free meals. What did I do? I'm just missing a picture. It's not a big deal. I think it was beautiful fruit. So now, a little bit, so we talked about the reimbursement and our money. Well, that money then goes to our foods for fueling our young minds, I said. So school foods must meet certain meal patterns and nutritional standards based off the dietary guidelines. Those are up for renewal right now, and there always goes for about five years. And so the current meal pattern increases our use of fruits, vegetables, and whole grains. That's our salad bar on the right, one of them. So the USDA requires that we have five components that you see up there on the MyPlate chart. They just want an overall balanced nutrition, but kids, students only have to take three of those five components. So no, they don't have to take milk, but they have to have the three other components, or they do not actually have to take the main course, but they have, we have to make sure that they have the three other components for us to get that reimbursable meal. And so that they actually get some, also a good nutrition. This is what's required just in overview, K through five, six through eight, nine to through twelve for us. The noticeable difference is the high schoolers, so cup of veg and fruit and the two-ounce equivalents of grain and meat, which could be ten chickens instead of six or something like that, so. So currently, right now, I have to make sure, myself and my team, we have to make sure that our week, one week meets eighty percent whole grains, that our saturated fat is less than ten percent. We have sodium guidelines for each grade level, and then minimum to maximum calories. And so I have to go through each menu item and make sure that if somebody's gonna have a slice of pizza, a salad, and their fruits and vegetables, that it meets the minimum of at least five hundred and fifty calories, eleven, ten milligrams sodium, and so forth. So the newest guidelines that you guys might have heard in the news now is as child nutrition programs, we do have a buy American provision already. So I do monitor, mostly it's fruits and vegetables that we have to buy as domestically as possible to help support our farmers. So now, starting July one, we have to watch our non-domestic at ten percent of our purchases, and then by twenty-thirty, that has to go down to five percent. So again, it's mostly our fresh fruits and vegetables, some of our canned. If something absolutely does not get grown here, and I really want kiwi. Wow, a magic. Oh, there it goes, Amber. Then I can write a little statement stating this gives us a green fruit and we can't get it here in USA. So, but I still have to monitor that percent. We currently watch our sugars and sodium, but now there will be a final rule. So our cereals, yogurt, and flavored milk, starting in July, have to meet a certain percentage of sugar. So I'm happy to say that most of our cereals already meet that. Our yogurt brand does meet that, and our Prairie Farms chocolate milk actually meets that now too. So we're, we're ahead of the game. Then by twenty-twenty-seven, the total weekly added sugars will have to be less than ten percent of the total calories. Then we already monitor sodium, and so by July one of twenty-twenty-seven, they want that fifteen percent less than what we have now for those three age groups. Additional changes are the food colorings and the food additives, which really have no business in our foods anyways, so it's kind of good. I have personally tried to monitor this even before this bill, so a lot of foods I have not gotten just because they have had dyes in them. I watch quite a bit of things on that end. And then there are funding cuts that they're still deliberating over, especially the farm-to-school one that can impact the school meals and farmers, and, you know, even the students of where their foods actually, that education of where their food comes from. So that's our, some of our fruit and vegetable offerings here at our schools. I swear we serve more than carrots and cucumbers, but it was towards the end of the year. So usually we have great, my staff does a great job at providing a variety of fruits and vegetables. Here's some more. That's some of our new kitchen now. The one on the left is our, our skillets and stuff where we can cook our hamburger and our pasta, and the right side is where mostly baking occurs. And that's our freezer and cooler. Freezer's on the left. It is a great new space. I thank everyone. It has a nice layout. I think our crew is getting used to it and moving around fine. Again, end of the year, empty, so we don't store and have food waste. So some goals for the future that I would like to implement is still increase meal participation at breakfast and lunch. Again, trying to stay on task of what kids like, what they will eat. You know, maybe try a lot more marketing. If we want healthier foods, we gotta market, you know, a little more fun and maybe find more ways out of the box to keep them there too. Incorporate more farm-to-school items. I'm actually working on, with somebody at a cattle farm right now to see if we can get some fresh beef. I always try to look for some fresh fruits and vegetables. I like to do corn on the cob, maybe some apples in the fall time. I'm always out there trying to connect and research, and the state does have a farm-to-school person that helps. It's hard being on this side of the state. It'd be a lot easier if I was Bismarck, and I'm very competitive, and so I want that. I like to increase our scratch, percent of scratch cooking as well. It's difficult to get that far, but I think if we do it little by little and try, you know, if we're at twenty percent now, I want to be at forty percent and fifty percent. Our kitchens right now aren't really set up for a hundred percent scratch cooking, but I bet you we can get higher up there if we work together as a team and, you know, it needs to be, we need to train and train the staff and show them that it can be done too. And then Winchip and Wilder, we are going to collaborate with a meal repack program that was started by the state. And so we are going to package our leftover menu items, and then a food pantry coordinator, which is probably the social worker, will distribute meals if needed to students. So we'll get the packaging. We're gonna get a freezer cooler for them to store their meals in, and it's just gonna be like a school food pantry that we're gonna try this next school year. So just, it takes an amazing team and continued training and constant willingness to change and grow and learn and adapt. So we do have the power to make change good, and we actually are the biggest restaurant that you'll ever come to. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Director Manke at this time. Amber?
Hello. I have a few questions and then a comment. Curious about the balances and if there is a lunch balance, how the district has evolved in what we do now for collection.
So, starting at the kitchen level, if it's over thirty, negative dollars, thirty dollars, then my kitchen manager will just send out an email or, not mostly an email, just saying negative this, please deposit your funds into however it says, my school bucks and that. Then over negative fifty dollars, then they get a letter, and then we also get in touch with the social workers at the school. And then most of the time, they, the social worker, will look into that student and just see if they have filled out a free reduced application, maybe speak with them, kind of go from there. It gets to be a fine line sometimes because then you feel like you're the food police sometimes and that kind of thing, so.
Is it possible for someone to fill out an application, like anytime during the school year?
They can, yep. Starting after July one now, for the next year, yep. And we do, they work, like I said, it took the village, and that helped a lot in doing that.
I also know that the legislature increased like the poverty level percentage, so I'm curious how that might impact next year.
Hopefully, yeah, I'm curious myself, because I think it's two-hundred and five, don't quote me. But maybe that will, families that might have been on that verge of that state two-hundred, a free or reduced meal, maybe that will push them over and more, more students will get to benefit from that. So that'll be something to keep an eye on, for sure.
Sure. My other comment, I have two comments. So a parent to a middle schooler and a elementary school and a preschooler. Our preschooler has a severe nut allergy, and I know that there's other districts in the state who maybe don't follow a strict peanut allergy, so I hope that we never change that, speaking from a parent of someone with an allergy. I also have enjoyed going to eat with my daughter at elementary school lunch, and very much a turkey tidbits lover, but have very much enjoyed the lunch. One of my comments that maybe from a parent perspective I would make, and you kind of alluded to it, is I don't know if it's consistent at every school or if every school is responsible for like posting their own menu. But at my child's school, there's stock images of like white bread and a meat, like every day. And so one of the suggestions that maybe I would echo with kind of the marketing piece is the images are not reflective of what is actually there. And in fact, there is a lot of choice, and there's a lot of healthy options. And so when I see as a parent, like, oh, just white bread and cheese, you know, I kind of like, oh, what's this coming from? And so maybe the nutrition can work with, like even like a media class or something to take reflective images of what actually is there, because I think the kids would enjoy seeing those options too.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because those, we have nothing to do with those.
So who knows the consistency throughout the district and?
Yes, it actually has been a topic for a very, very long time on those. And so yes, it would be nice if we, actually, I wanted to get rid of them all together, but that's not gonna happen. So yes, very much. I just read that a school district actually did get their, some class of students, and they actually did that for them. So yes, good idea. You're right on Trent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Lunn?
I just wondered, what is your department's?
Dr. Lunn, we don't really have anything, I volunteer myself, but we don't really have any, any say in any of those departments. Yeah, it'll be fun to see the culinary at the CIA.
Other questions?
Yeah, this may be a question for Mr. Baumbach, but there's a negative, there's an amount owed on the school lunches. How does that get handled?
So as already mentioned, sometimes there'll be a number of ways that sometimes donations will come in to offset those. Some of those will be just one parent leaving a little extra to till, so to speak, to contribute or at the secretary's desk. Usually smaller amounts and kind of haphazard. The Associated School of Foundation has raised money or through the effort of the get-to-wear jeans on Friday type of staff effort, has contributed towards that negative lunch balance. But anything that doesn't come all the way down to zero ends up landing in the general ledger. So it was an appropriate conversation at the state level and will continue to be one.
Other questions?
Okay, so I don't know if this is exactly a question that you can answer, but I was wondering if there was any talk about Central's salad bar reopening in the near future? Just because I know so many people that would benefit from it.
That's me.
I mean, it's just sitting there. So I was just curious if it's planning on coming back.
That is my goal for today. Don't fold it to me. We have, just this last year, we had enough staff, so I'm hoping that that continues with our hiring practices. The hard part about Central is that it's on two different floors, so it's hard when you're short-staffed to have both of those floors helped. So my goal is to put something, a salad bar, but like have a hot sandwich or cold sandwich or something that students can go up there and just go. So, because I think that will help too.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Jay?
I mean, that's an interesting segue, because I was gonna ask about facilities and the goal for scratch cooking. Is the new, I mean, I hope the new kitchen in central foods area is gonna help on that goal? And maybe the follow-up on that is whether there are facility issues? And, and maybe the follow-up on that is whether there are facility issues are kind of in the way of meeting your goals here for the, for the dietary program?
Ooh, good one, Mr. Clevin. You know, really, we just have to start somewhere. So if I want more scratch cooking, then we're gonna have to decide which foods are we gonna do that, or which meals? And then see what we need to bring in, because our new Central kitchen, our new main kitchen, it, it does have ovens, and it has a proofer, and it has great things, but like we can't make our own hamburger patties right now. So it's, it's things like that that we would have to look at to see which foods we would, and then to purchase those items. So really, it's, it's our own department, maybe, that is just, needs to move forward.
Follow-up on that, if, if you do see something, like, Amber, I'm gonna take your question, and I'll get it wrong, and I'll paraphrase it, but when there are things that we can help with, or policy administration can help with, I hope you're not bashful about challenging us and asking, no, no promise something could happen, but knowing the issues you have, because I think this is a very important part of the kids' school day. And just when you have things that are of issue, bring them to us and, you know, present them through the administration, see what we can do.
Well, I appreciate that. I am not bashful, especially when nutrition is dear to my heart, and our job is feeding the students, but it's not just finding things that, we know everybody likes pizza or chicken nuggets, but it's finding ways to incorporate some of the newer foods that maybe they don't get a chance to, to try, even at home. So you already know that they might get apples and oranges, but bringing in, I brought in watermelon radishes this year to try, and you wouldn't normally try those, right? So I just tried to introduce some different things, and so if that's a main dishes, sorry, Amber, but we're getting rid of turkey tidbits. But I am bringing in like some orange chicken and some things too, so it'll be nice to have some different changes and see how the kids react a little bit, and so, but I will definitely, I'll keep that in mind.
Other questions? Eric?
I just thought, if you can't answer, maybe Catherine or somebody can. Do we know what percent of kids in middle school and high school don't eat lunch on campus?
Oh, gosh.
Or vice versa, what, what percent do? Because, because I've got grandkids in that era, and it seems like none of them or their friends or anybody eats in the school, so I'm just curious, how many do we know?
I wonder if I could find that out for you, Dr. Lund. With our new food service program, I wonder if we could at least finagle something, you know, with the amount of students that go to those, you know, schools and then, you know, kind of guesstimate to that. It's hard because you, Central, you have Hugo's right down the street, and you have M&amp;H, and you have Red Pepper and all that stuff, so you try to keep them, even though we are the cheapest meal you'll get. But, you know, so it's hard, and that's why I think I always try to look what can draw them in, what, and a lot of times it's time. You might see that line at Central and go, well, I can run to M&amp;H gas station faster than I can get through that line. So it's also looking at some of those things too, and separating up and some of the lines.
But anodally, I, I hear about it through my patients and relatives at the middle school, and they're, they're, they're landlocked in those buildings. They're not going to M&amp;H, or they're not going to Hardee's or anything, so I was just curious if we had an idea.
Middle school doesn't have open campus, so if kids are leaving, oh, okay, I thought that's what you were saying, I'm like, we're missing something. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Yeah, well, and typically, if we see students not eating in general, there are staff that will check in with them just to see if there is a barrier with a lunch balance, or if there is an emotional underlying issue there that's precluding them from wanting to eat publicly or whatever it is. So we do have lunch staff scan for them throughout the year, because that's concerning for us, because we know how important it is, as you said, Mr. Clevin said, to make sure they're eating during the course of the day. It helps with learning, it helps with all the things.
Well, just to give you some negative feedback, the thing I hear from most of the kids is they don't like the food. It's not, it's not a money thing, it's not a that, they, they don't, they don't like the food, and they'd rather just wait, and they go home and eat at 3:30. And I, and I was, that's why I was wondering, do we know what, what percent that is, is, you know, maybe it's just, maybe I'm just talking to all the wrong people.
It might be something to pay attention to, though, next, in this next school year, to see.
Any further questions in the room? Otherwise, Dave, anything, question or comment on the phone?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'm with Amber if I can weigh in on turkey tidbits. I, I still have recorded voicemails from my, my eight-year-old daughter, who's now 21, asking me to come and eat turkey tidbits with her at West Elementary School, so I know we're only two votes, but in all seriousness, thank you so much for feeding kids. Just one clarifying question, could you talk to the general public listening about if a student has a negative balance, are they still eating lunch that day? Can you just talk through that? I just don't think everybody knows how that part works.
So even if a student has a negative balance, nobody even really knows, except for maybe my secretary, Lois, and the social worker, and so yes, they still get paid. Our systems are, you cannot read if anybody, there is no negative balance on there, but you can't read names, you can't really see anything on there, so it is very confidential in, in my book. They get the same meals, they, the only thing that we say in high school and middle school, if they have a negative balance, they can't buy a la carte, which is extra and optional anyways.
Hearing nothing, I will move on. Thank you, anything else in the room, other questions? Okay, as a reminder, this was an item for discussion, so if nothing further, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item 4B is a school board self-assessment committee report. For that, I will turn to President Berger on the phone. Dave, are you available to, to report on the self-assessment committee report? Thank you. We, we have moved on now to item 4B, and I would just turn it over to you for the report of the school board self-assessment committee.
Yes, so as you can see, the school board self-assessment committee met on Wednesday, May 28th, and reviewed the feedback, the tool we've used to discern where we have got some growth areas. I'm gonna lean heavily on Dr. Hodak after my initial remarks, because she was there too, and, and she's in the room. I know Joel's absent this evening, but what stood out to me was how important it is for us to have gone through the Be Legendary training and have that be at the forefront of our meetings, the focus on student achievement, celebrating success, and much of our conversation centered around, as we move forward with a new strategic plan, how important it will be not just to indicate those pieces of our plan and the agenda, but perhaps to have a one-page of the strategic plan for each board member tableside, to, to keep the focus on, on the goals and vision of the district. Their full report is there. We, we spent quite a bit of time not only poring over the comments and taking them to heart, but also leaning into how else we might improve our, our connection and communication with our various constituencies. So just know that we, we're, we're working in earnest to listen and respond to the feedback through that tool. I'm happy to stand for questions, but Dr. Hodak, would you like to share your thoughts from that meeting?
Yes, thank you very much, Dave. As you read through the comments, that triggered a lot of our discussion regarding more so how to improve, what could we do differently? So I think that we tried to compare and contrast comments as well, but the one on page two, of course, is the talking about the citizen comment area, and we discussed how could we improve that. In other words, citizens make their comments, they put them on the blue card, and they say, and then we give no response to them, that that's in policy and that's the way that we've done it. And so, and I'll just say it, it's coming from me, I think that we could do some things differently to make the public feel like we are responding to them, instead of just giving no response that night. So I talked about, maybe we quarterly report on that we had four blue cards in the last quarter, and these were the themes that arose, whether it was public or whether it was internal, something that lets the public know that we're doing this. And then we could say that from those four comments, we heard back from the school administration that three were handled and in a very efficient way, or there is one still being worked on, something to that part. And the other was if we could possibly have the administration team respond, not us responding, I don't want us to get into any discussion, I think that's very valuable, the way the practices has been, but if there is, from Matt or Catherine or Terry, and they have knowledge of something that is going on, that they could simply say to us and the public, that is currently being worked on. I think Catherine, last time when you were speaking about the new virtual school, and that kind of went hand and, went hand in hand with the gentleman that had spoken earlier, so, and you did take a little bit of time, but if that time had happened while he was here, because of course they talk, and then they generally just leave. So those were some of the comments that were coming from me. Otherwise, we just simply talked about improvement on the self-assessment, what we could do differently, did we want to get something from the publics, both internal and external, not just from within the administrative team and ourselves. So Dave, I think that kind of wraps it up.
Yeah, that's, that's very well summarized. Happy to stand for questions from other board members about the process that went into this review.
Any question from other board members? Dr. Lund?
I like trying to look at what we can do, public comments, but I think we better have our legal people get it, because part of that, most of that comes from legal thing about not having stuff on the agenda and then speaking, whether it's an administrator or, so I just want to make sure that we don't, don't get ourselves in legal difficulties if we change things.
Understood. Other questions or comments from board members? Amber?
I think oftentimes, we get caught up in discussing as a board some things, and maybe one area of improvement is we have some great perspectives at the end of the table, and even though they're not voting members, as well as our associate and assistant superintendent, I think sometimes being more proactive as a board, just to say, do you have anything to add, or do you have a perspective to share? Because certainly, they might, and sometimes it's, might be hard to know when to interject. Our students certainly aren't shy to do that, which is great. We want students who are engaged and active and wanting us to give consideration, but sometimes that perspective is helpful, and I think if they're here, it's nice to know on-time feedback about kind of what's going on. So maybe just our board can be more proactive about reaching out and saying, hey, teacher, do you have a perspective, or hey, student, do you have a perspective?
Other board member questions or comments? Seeing none? Anything further? Dave?
No, I, I appreciate the conversation, and, and we're always seeking improvement, so looking forward to continuing to have these conversations.
Thank you, and thank you all. As a reminder, this is another item for discussion, so no action to be taken, but thank you for that. Moving on then to item number five, superintendent's recommendations for action. 5A is the consent agenda. I would seek a motion for approval. Amber, motion, makes a motion for approval? Second by Jay. We'll take a roll call vote.
Hodak?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Manley?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Pomisino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. 5B is appointment of the Valley Middle School Associate Principal, I believe.
Yes.
Turn this over to Catherine.
Thank you, Vice Chair Anderson. So I'm excited tonight to recommend for your approval, Ms. Amber Basing is the new Associate Principal at Valley Middle School. We went through a really comprehensive interview process. There was a team of Valley staff and some district personnel as well, that kind of crossed the spectrum of academic and behavioral and SEL and, and all the things, and we had a very competitive group of applicants as well. And so we spent the day talking to six different individuals with different backgrounds, and Ms. Basting was chosen as the top candidate based on a wide variety of things. First of all, she carries a really strong background and portfolio in interventions, and the Associate Principal at Valley Middle School carries the behavioral intervention side of things, but we also know how that ties into academics. And so with her special education background, she also has that gamut covered, from an angle of knowing how to scaffold and, and help students achieve. She has been known to be approachable, she's been known to be a problem solver, she has great listening and communication skills. As you can tell, I'm a fan of Amber Basing. She most recently has been working as a special education coordinator at both of our main campuses, high school campuses, as well as the sale program coordinator, and you've heard about that program before, it serves some of our most at-risk youth, and she has taken that and ratcheted up the expectations there and helped us serve kids. So it is my extreme honor to recommend Ms. Amber Basing as Valley Middle School's Associate Principal for the 25-26 school year, at the experience-based level salary, you can see it all listed out here, but the total salary of $100,568. And Amber is here today, so either of us could entertain questions if you're so inclined.
Any questions from board members for Dr. Glatch or Amber? Jay?
I'm sure it's in the literature, but that, this is the recommendation of the committee coming out of the committee?
It is, and the committee, prior to going into the interview process, solicited a bunch of feedback and input from the broader staff about the qualities and dispositions and skillsets they're seeking in their new Associate Principal, so there was a broader reach of input on the type of candidate we were looking for.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Lund?
I, I would move approval. I'd also like to say I'm, I'm very encouraged, the quality of the candidates we're getting in this era, you know, it's, it's just great to see that we're seeing lots of good candidates for these positions, but I move approval of the recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion for approval by Dr. Lund and a second by Jay. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, roll call vote?
Pomisino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Manley?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item 5C on our agenda is the SRO agreement for 25-26. Back to Dr. Glatch.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. So as you can see in the memo, we are seeking approval for another memorandum of agreement with our Grand Forks Police Department to stand up our team of school resource officers. I don't think I need to re-explain to this group how valuable those individuals are to maintaining the order and safety and really being proactive in those measures across our organization. I was reminiscing with the new chief about when I first became a principal in this district and how we shared one SRO across our middle schools. and how we shared one SRO across our middle schools, and it was really an impossible task. I don't know how he did it, I think it was a lot of coffee, but our current system where we have a full-time individual at each of our secondary-level campuses who also then serve and support the elementary levels, has been outstanding, and it's truly helped us serve our students and their families well in a proactive manner. So in the memorandum, you can see that there is an increase of this year's over last year's contract of $3,641.68. That's just kind of with the annual anticipated increases in salary. I do need to note, however, this bottom number will likely change. It was based on our current cadre of SROs, and there is going to be one changeover in one of the positions, and so that number will be modified accordingly. So we can update you that when that time comes. But I'm seeking approval of the memorandum of agreement, which gives Dr. Brenner permission to sign the agreement once it is also signed by the mayor's office, and for us to engage in that contract with our PD.
Questions from board members? Jay?
Summary of changes from previous agreement? Is this no change, a little change, a lot of change? What's the summary?
The summary is just the salary this time.
And do we have any sense if that, and mind you, I'm going to ask the question, but I'm not too worried about $3,600. Do we think that number will likely go up, go down? Do we have any sense of that?
According to my point of contact, they're most likely down, but we don't know for sure.
But safe to say it won't be like some large increase? Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members? Okay. We have a motion from Amber for approval, second from Dr. Hodak to approve the question for Dr. Lund.
I just want to make sure, so we're approving it so that you don't have to come back to us to decrease it by 2,000 or increase. So I just want to make sure we've got the motion and everything correct so that, that it gives the administration leeway to, to handle the unknown.
Yes, the request is for you to approve the memorandum of understanding itself, and then Dr. Brenner will sign off in accordance with the mayor's office on the final details and number.
Okay. So motion on the floor. Amber has made that motion. Dr. Hodak has seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote?
Larson is absent. Pomacino?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
H S zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Five D is designation of authorized representatives for title program and grants for 25 and 26. Turn it over to Matt.
All right, thank you, Vice President Anderson, members of the board. It's my honor to present to you our authorized representatives for our title and other federal funds. As you can tell, it's that time of the year where we are going after our federal funds and putting those grants together, as well as making sure we have all of our authorized representatives prepared and ready for the next steps in this process. Listed below, you'll see all of our title and federal programs that are either competitive and/or we need representatives for. And so you'll see that listed out there below. That includes our Title I all the way through our Title IX, as well as our Johnson O'Malley, our Indian Education Formula, Head Start, 21st Century. We do have two slight changes in our memo, as you've seen from years past. Previously on number 13 and number 14, District Homeless Liaison and District Foster Care Liaison has been Ms. Sarah Berg, who has, is still with the district, just serving in a different capacity. And so we have actually had that at the building level now, where there'll be a person who serves for a building for 50% of the time and then takes us on as a role for the district, the other 50%. And so you'll see that with the District Homeless Liaison as Deborah Nagel, and then the District Foster Care Liaison, which is Christina Abraham. And that, so they serve 50% within the building as a social worker, and then they'll be serving that district-level position this year. And then we have our school food service, which you just heard from Wendy Menke. So the administrative recommendation is to approve the authorized, their authorization of the designated individuals as the authorized reps for the titles above.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay. A motion from Jay, second from Bill to approve the authorization of designated individuals as authorized representatives for the above title and other federal programs and competitive grants for 25-26 as presented. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Clevin?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Lund?
Yes.
Pomacino?
Yes.
Anders, excuse me, Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
H S zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Five E is the consolidated grant application for 2025 and 2026 for federal title funding. Back to Mr. Baki.
All right, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, again, my opportunity here to present to you the consolidated grant application for the federal title funding. Again, we're going through that process. Typically, we present this to you in July, but this has been moved up. Our narrative for our grant is actually due at the end of June. And so you're going to see today that even though our narrative is due to, in June, at the end of June, and there's a part in the application in which we need to, we need to note when the application was approved by the board, and we also need to note when the board approved the authorized representatives. And so if you're asking, well, typically we do this in July, why are we doing this in June? That is wise, because our narrative is due at the end of June, and we need to have all those i's dotted and t's crossed before we can submit that application. And so today, I'm going to go through just some of the general information related to the consolidated grant application and what it encompasses with title federal funding. However, as you'll see in some of the slides, there's still yet to be determined amounts and allocations, as we have not received that from the federal government, or I should say, the state hasn't received that from the federal government, which means in turn we have not received it from the state yet. We did just get some notification on Title IV, which I'll share here in a little bit, but I just want to dive right into it. And this probably looks very familiar for a lot of you who have already served on the board for many years. It's very similar to what has come across in years past. And so what you'll see for the first item is the 25-26 federal grant funding in white on the left-hand column, and then in the yellow, you'll see the 24-25 funding levels. As you'll see in our Title I funding, that was a decrease from this year, or what we will get in the 25-26 school year in comparison to what we received in 24, or 24-25, which is about $220,000 decrease. Overall, across the state, we received an 8% reduction, and then in Grand Forks, we received a reduction as well in comparison to that 8%. As we move into next year, they are changing the, the funding system across the state. Previously, it was solely based on, basically a formula that they took into account, the free and reduced lunch, and it was really a lot driven by those free and reduced lunch numbers. But it was also driven by poverty numbers, some of the census data, a combination of, of a lot of different things. A lot of states across the state simply take the census data. North Dakota is moving in that route, and so as we move forward, you will see that there's going to be a bigger impact based on the census data and a greater impact being put on that, making sure that we're correctly counting that. It will still impact us with the free and reduced lunch. As you'll see later on, when we talk about the free and reduced lunch, that really comes into effect when we talk about the rank and serve process, which is where it determines where our school, individual schools rank and serve and what they will get as far as the serving of the allocation later on. Earlier on Fri, or later on Friday afternoon, we received our Title IV allocation, and I want to emphasize, these are estimated amounts. We have not received final allocation amounts yet. But our estimated amount is 389,740. As you'll see in comparison to the 24-25 school year, that's, that was 444,782. So again, that's a decrease of $55,000. So altogether, right now, we're looking at a decrease of $275,000 in funds that we're looking into the 25-26 school year, when looking at federal funds, just so you're aware. As we get Title II and Title III, I will, once we get our final allocations, I will report back to the board the final allocation amounts when we do receive those. So I'm going to share a little bit about each one of these, these categories. Title I, really the purpose of Title I is to provide really significant opportunities to receive a fair and equitable education for all students across the board, and really looking at the high-quality education, and really trying to close those achievement gaps for our students that are at disadvantage in comparison to others. On the right-hand side, you'll see what our Grand Forks Public Schools receiving, schools are receiving as far as Title I funding. One thing you'll see that Grand Forks Public Schools, the black is what the 24-25 free and reduced lunch count was. So you'll see the 35.88 in comparison to the red, which is the 24-25 school year, or 23-24 school year, I'm sorry, excuse me. And so you'll see just either the slight dips or the increases across the board, and you'll see that from all of the schools that are currently being served within our title funds. So the schools that are not listed on there are not being served with our title funding. You qualify for title funding by one of two ways. You can either be above the district average, or you can be above the grade span. And so what I mean by grade span is elementary level. If you're above the average of that grade span, you would qualify for title funding. If you're above the middle school grade span of grade six through eight, you could be above that grade average, or you could be above the district average in order to qualify. Typically, at the high school level, we don't see too many actually take title funds, even if they qualify or not, because of the general idea that if we can provide those services at a younger age, that's where they're most impactful and beneficial. So you'll see our estimated, and again, I will, I will put, again, a big emphasis on estimated allocations for each one of those schools that are currently being served. And you'll see two, two different schools that also pop on here, which is the Holy Family and St. Mike's. The, the funds flow through Grand Forks Public Schools, but they do get services provided to them through our non-public, as long as they intend to, they, they provide to us that they do plan on participating in that, and they do receive the services accordingly through our district. And so you'll see allocations for them as well. On the right-hand side, you'll see, and just to clarify, so we're all on the same page, the white column is what the 25-26 school estimated allocation is, and the one in the blue is the 24-25 school year allocation. So you'll see, again, some schools went down drastically, and some schools actually did go up, and that was based on, again, their free and reduced lunch count going up, or in comparison to the district, it went, it went up. And so it does just show a little bit of the, the moving that occurs across our district. Not every year do, just because our district goes down, does every school go down. As you'll see in this case, you'll see Phoenix and Viking actually received a higher allocation amount than what they received last year. On the right-hand side, you'll see the district reservations. These are various items that we, that are built into the consolidated grant application. You'll see administrative fees, you'll see indirect costs, which is based on a percentage of the grant, neglected and delinquent, homeless, and then family engagement dollars, which again is a percentage-based that we have to put aside to reach those goals. And then you'll see funded activities for our administrative and our neglected and delinquent funds. We have a grant manager who is remote, Dr. D'Amica Norwood, who helps and basically manages a majority of this and works very collaboratively with myself and the administration across the district. We also have our pair certification process that is run through this, supplies, professional development, travel, and then we also serve RMAC with facility support. Also at the building level, we do have various services that we provide. So when you see the allocations on the left-hand column here in white, you're, you may be wondering, well, what, what does that look like at each one of our buildings? Well, here's some of the funded activities that you'll see at those individual buildings. You'll see reading specialists, you'll see Title I coordinators, behavior interventionists, social workers, counselors. So they receive an allocation from the district, but they may make the determination that due to the needs of their building, they may buy up additional social work services, or they may buy up additional counseling services. We also have math interventionist, parent involvement strategies that are utilized, professional development, training, supplies, equipment. So there's really a plethora of different options or opportunities to serve and provide those options for those schools. And then like I stated before, we also have a family engagement in which our district receives a certain percentage that we set aside for family engagement activities. Each year, it's based on a 1% of our grant total. We have to put aside for those family engagement activities. At the elementary and middle school level, typically that looks as family events or activities that happen in the evening, or even during the school day, like red events or various things like that, which we've become very creative on getting families into our buildings and taking advantage of the opportunities to educate them on some of the things that these title funds do bring to our buildings. Funding set aside for homeless, as you saw previously, in our administrative aspect, we have funds that really go to support our educational-related services to children's in shelter or in transition. And as you'll see there, we have set aside our estimated amount of $98,000 to help support not only those students, but those families in this process. Really, the funded activities really go to funding our homeless liaison, which again, you approved the authorized representative in that position, and then really transportation and basic need supplies for those students in transition. Part two, part, or Title II Part A, really the purpose of Title II is that we're looking at professional development. How do we provide professional development for our staff and increase the number of teachers and principals in our schools who are effective in their teaching practices and leadership? And so really, it's about the professional development. As you'll see, our allocation amount is yet to be determined on that, but last year was $632,000. That actually went down from the previous year, last year, that is. And so I don't know if, any indications with Title I and Title IV indicate that it's going to be going down as well, too, but we'll wait to see. All of the funded activities are primarily, a lot of the funded activities go to our instructional coaches at the secondary level. That takes up a majority of that funding. However, we do have some opportunity to provide staff professional development. We do a lot of our Avid training through Title II. We also provide, this last year has been a lot for our ML teacher training, because we've had such an influx of ML students come into our district, and then providing those staff those opportunities become more highly quality, or qualified and trained in that area. And so we've had influx of ML teachers come into our district as well. And so getting them up to speed and trained has been a focus this last year. We also have our social worker and counselor training, and then our new admin mentoring, which you heard me speak about at our previous board meeting. And one thing I do want to note is that FTEs are spread across multiple different funding streams. And so when I say, when I say that, they may be partially funded in Title II, they may be partially funded in Title I, Title IV, general fund. It may, you know, be funded in multiple different funding streams as we move through the, the system, just so you're aware. Title III, the purpose of this is really to meet, you know, our ML students and the needs of our English proficient students. Really, this is dedicated towards providing services and high-quality professional development for ML students. However, you'll see that when you look at that allocation amount, it is significantly less than others. As our ML population rises, we do see an increase in that typically, in comparison across, across the nation, though, when we look at our, the population of ML students here, in other parts of the country, it may not be to the level that they have. And so just because we see an increase in our ML population does not necessarily mean we're going to see an increase in our allocation amount. Last year, we did see an increase. This upcoming year, we're hoping, we're hopeful that we'll see another increase due to the increase in ML population that we've seen in our district, but that does not mean that it necessarily will come to fruition. Funded activities, with the amount of money we have here, we primarily focus on professional development. We also do provide some ML summer school tutoring for our high school students, and then a big expenditure that occurred this last year was instructional supplies for some curriculum bought by our ML staff. And just a reminder, we do, we are now in our second year of having a full-time ML coordinator that serves our district in Ivona Todorovic. We haven't had that previously. And the last item that I'll, they'll speak on, and then I'll open it up for questions, is Title IV. Really, Title IV is really looking at three different goals. And again, the allocation amount And again, the allocation amount this year is down about $55,000. And, and each one of those goals has a specific area that we have to meet, as well as it has what I would call a different bucket percentage that we have to meet. And so when we're looking at Title IV, there are three buckets that, that we look at. We look at well-rounded education, we look at safe and, safe and healthy students and supporting those, and then we look at effective use of technology. And so there's some rules that go with that. When we talk about well-rounded, we have to spend at least 20% of our allocation on well-rounded, and we have to spend at least 20% on our safe and healthy. Whereas in the technology world, we cannot spend, there's a 15% cap of what we can spend on devices, equipment, and technology-related expenditures. And so we got to balance that, and so sometimes we have the, the conversation, or sometimes administratively, we talk about, well, why don't we put, you know, all of these funds towards the well-rounded education? Well, we can't because we have to meet that 20%. We can't go below that 20% threshold. We have to be at least 20% in both the well-rounded and the safe and healthy. So when we talk about that, a lot of our well-rounded education is met through our Avid work that we do with our staffing and supplies, our director and our coordinator. And then also, we do have, again, non-public funds that we have to provide, and that primarily is where the after-school clubs come into play. These are where our non-public schools participate is through their, their after-school clubs and their after-school robotics, which is basically the only thing that technology funds is in the non-public schools. And then we, for our safe and healthy, we use primarily for our MTSS coordinators at both our secondary and elementary level. So as you'll see, as we go through this, there was quite a bit of staffing that we utilize these funds for. And so as we see maybe decreases across our system, that's going to be really important to have conversations about how do we prioritize our staffing and make sure that we're providing that support across our district to provide the level of care and education we can at our district level. So I just went through a lot of information in a very quick manner, but are there any questions that you may have for me?
Questions for Mr. Bakke from board members. Jay?
Are the, are all of these allocations formulaic? Like X number of students, time Y equals a dollar figure?
Correct, yes. So, and that primarily, that's done at the state level, except for when we talk about Title I, that's through the Title Rank and Serve process. And that's basically, send us a spreadsheet, we input all the enrollment, free and reduced lunch numbers, and it spits out a, a number allocation based on the schools.
And so these, generally, they're decreases, but there, it's, it's a mixed bag there. Is it based on the per capita funding is lower, or we have fewer students?
It typically is based on, so it's based on the state allocation, which then disperses down into the district, and that's based on our ranking across the state level when it comes to the free and reduced lunch, or in this case, now moving forward, will be the census data that we look at. And so that's based on where we rank within the, the state as it relates to what our needs are in comparison to other districts across our state.
Okay, thanks.
Other board member questions? Amber?
Not that we would want to tie too many positions to like title or grant funding, but if we had more Title III funds, could we use those funds to pay for like the ML coordinator, more staff, teachers ideally?
Yes, the simple answer is yes. But as far as the funding goes, typically, we don't see, again, when we compare North Dakota with the amount of ML families and students we have in our district or in our, in our state, in comparison to other places across the country, we don't see the amount of Title III funds that others across the country do.
Yeah, I also just wanted to publicly state that I think that amount that we get is completely negligible, and I think that however we potentially structure like a legislative committee in the interim, I think that is one of the things that we can help nail down with our state legislatures and maybe however they take it up. But I just think those, we have a duty to educate those students, and we see an influx for workforce, and I just think that that is just a crazy low amount. And I'm always disappointed when I see that amount. So, and I know that, that, that has nothing to do with our district. I just am trying to think about ways that we can continue to like over advocate for more dollars for those programs.
And I know, especially in Grand Forks, and we've, we've heard it from other districts across the state, there was a big push for additional funding when it came to ML students, and we saw an influx in other districts as well, where they saw an increase of ML families coming into their district. And so really, there was a push across the state for really increasing that weighting factor on the foundation aid formula. So a reminder, this is one portion of what we receive from the federal government with Title III, but there's also a portion that we receive within our foundation aid formula, where there are weighted ADMs that come through our ML weighting formula. So there, there's additional funds that come to the level that it is needed to support the work that be, is being done, no, but we can continue to advocate for that at the state level. We appreciate your support in that, too.
Other questions? Dr. Hodak?
No question, just a couple of comments. First of all, Matt, I sincerely appreciate how you put this together. I think it's very important. We've all worked with federal title funding and the ups and downs, and I think it's a very scary time right now. But I would encourage you kind of to piggyback off of Amber's, that this PowerPoint alone would be very bene, would be beneficial to parents, to the public, to know that this is, I think the Grand Forks School District does such an excellent job of balancing programs with personnel to meet all of the specifications for these grants, so that people would understand that we're going to do everything we can to maintain what we have and to offer the students. But at the same time, if these dollars go down, the state doesn't match what's happening and everything else, then eventually, we're going to get into that hard decision-making of what we're going to have to cut, whether it's personnel or programs. But my intention for commenting is, I think the Grand Forks administration does a tremendous, outstanding job with what I've seen, so thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from board members?
Can I just mention, respond to Dr. Hodak? So, so one thing, we do inform, we go through, when we go through our process with our title funding, we do provide the option, or the opportunity to, in the fall, where we hold our annual meeting, where I do present this data as well to families that attend that meeting, we present, or we provide two options, one during the day, typically around the noon time, and then one in the evening later on in that week, where we provide options for families to attend, and then we go through this data. Attendance isn't always the best that we'd like, but we do provide that as an option in the fall, so thank you. Yeah, so each one of those happens at their individual buildings, where they go through their allocation amount and, and go through this process, and they use this sometimes as a template for that. Yep, correct. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Dave, anything on the phone from you?
None for me, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from board members in the room? Questions or comments? If none, the administrative recommendation is to approve the 25, 2025-2026 consolidated grant, grant application for the Grand Forks Public School District, and to authorize Mr. Matt Bakke to submit the final application as the authorized representative. Bill, motion? Jeff, second? Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote?
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Pomacino?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Clevon?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item 5F is the consideration of property insurance bids. Mr. Bomback?
President Berger, Vice President Anderson, and members of the board, each year, we work with Voler Insurance to see who's out there and help us cover on our property insurance. In particular, just as noted here, North Dakota law, if we were to pay for a service within board powers, pay for a service north of $50,000 a year, it's where the needs to go through a public bid process, and that we followed, unless, of course, it's Ender for North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. So on the sheet, it's actually, within your board packet, the attachment is a bid comparison document. It includes a number of different coverages. The property insurance leads off with equipment breakdown insurance, which is included. Everything below that falls outside of what needs to go to the board for approval, but of course, when we renew this, it kind of all goes together here. So we want to provide all that information to you. As noted in the memo, we did get a renewal quote from Liberty Mutual, who we have today. Largely happy with that. We did have conversation with a number of others, including affiliated FM, Zurich Travelers National, as well as the Chubb Corporation. The Chubb Corporation, we've been working closely with, and a big thank you to Jonathan Elwine, Buildings and Grounds Director, for working, getting a lot of information over to the Chubb Corporation to see if we could get a quote. We have not yet received a quote from Chubb, which is unfortunate, although, you know, there's still a chance. We need to have our insurance in place by June 30, so a little bit optimistic, but as of right now, we're still very satisfied with our renewal quote. Just to kind of run through the highlights of that, the top line, it does, within these columns here, you can see at the header, on the left, it's coverages, and then it's a reminder of what the current premium is for the coverages. The next column, the second of those, would be the renewal coverage. The third one was kind of a placeholder for the Chubb Corporation we have not received yet. What I would say here is, first and foremost, thanks to Voler, and they're, we're acquired by Marsh McLennan Agency, so that's the branding you see on this, and Tim Scarperrut, who works with us on this. He's been working on this since April 1, and sometimes these insurance companies take their time and don't get back to us, but it's no blame to Voler and the team over there. What they were able to do here is ultimately get us a 9% increase in, in value coverage, statement of values increased that much. That would include things like increased coverages at each of the buildings. It would include the increased coverage associated with the Career Impact Academy. It would also include increased coverage from the child nutrition or the central kitchen being added on. It's 9% in valuation from 522 million of coverage to 569, at a cost of just over 5%. So those numbers are, are where we'd like to see them, so ultimately, that's an increase from year over year of $27,000 on a policy of more than a half a million dollars. I'd say that's, that's really good. It, it is a reminder in that we need to keep working hard on some of our roofing, especially at Red River and, and Central, and so that has worked its way through that conversation. There's a lot of information here. Happy to answer any questions, but largely, that's kind of the quick update here, is 9% of that valuation increase at a cost of only 5.5%. The motion here, a request from the administration, would be to get the school board to move approval of the Liberty Mutual quote for renewal, is coming here July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
Questions or comments from board members? Amber?
Brandon, can you share what the, like, total cost is per year, and then maybe what the total cost was the previous year?
Yeah, exactly. So for, if we're talking just about the Liberty Mutual and the property, that's going to be at the top of the sheet here, where last year, we would have paid $498,864, and this year would be $526,302. When you put in context of all the other insurances that come together, that'll be at the, the bottom of that table. So it's this year, $592,232, increased to $630,774.
Okay, and then, did we receive any discounts, or could we retroactively for updated security, entrances, fire systems, new buildings?
No discounts, but certainly those considerations will come into play. I don't, I'm not an underwriter, I couldn't tell you how that all comes into play, but in the roofing example, every roof and every leak improved, not just by replace, not just by fixing a roof, but full replacement certainly helps. So one big change that we're expecting to affect these numbers is, you know, Valley Middle School being renewed completely, that'll have an impact. It comes throughout a quote format.
Okay, thank you.
Those are your questions about Valley and Twining and stuff?
Good. Other questions from board members? Jay?
So was there a deadline established for respondents to submit?
I, I don't know for sure, and our, our broker, Voler, handled those conversations directly, so I don't know if it was set early on, but maybe that's something worth keeping in mind.
Yeah, and I, that kind of explains how the process runs, so, thanks.
Other questions from board members? If not, the administrative recommendation is to approve the Liberty quote for beginning July 1 of 2025 through?
Yeah, apologize, quick correction, with insurance, it's a weird one, it starts on June 30 to ensure coverage overlap?
Okay, okay.
I'll just make a motion to approve the recommendation for the renewal with Liberty Mutual.
Good, we have a motion, and a second by Sherry. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote?
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Pomacino?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Clevon?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item 5G is the renewal of the community high school lease. Back to Mr. Bomback.
Yeah, members of the board, exactly as it says here, this is renewal of the lease. If you put the, the lease for Community High next to the last year, or this current year's to the new renewal, you'd find no differences except in a couple of numbers. Outside of one thing, as noted in the cover memo, our Encore program has been housed out of a relocatable situated over there. It's been slowly deteriorating, and, and we were on the same page as our landlord, and it may be time to retire that. And so you'll find a paragraph that had articulated an additional lease payment of just under $4,000 that has been removed. So what we will do with the Encore program is that Kayla and supplies and her team will now be housed out of the Mark Stanford Education Center, as we have space for that, and we'll have the modest savings on the lease itself. The lease renewal increased, I think, a quarter on the square foot. I misplaced my overall number, but it was, I believe, just over 2% increase. Working with the state has been a great partnership, and then it's really just a modesty increase each year to year. So these are normally renewed, every five years, the lease will articulate an initial term with an auto renewal. I misspoke, it's not an auto renewal, it'll come back to the board for approval, but it lays out the terms of those futures, so the rates are set, so we know what to budget for, but it's still a year by year. So what you'll find here is that kind of language within the document, although the administrative recommendation is to approve the renewed lease just for the first year, the initial term, which is July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, for a total annual cost of And one other note there is that you'll recall, we've moved these leases to an eligible payment from the, the building fund. The building fund can pay for leases, and so we've moved it from the general fund to the building fund to, to free up those resources for other priorities.
Questions for Mr. Bomback? Dave, any questions on the phone?
No, thank you.
Jay?
I, I can't imagine there are any, but there, are there any problems with the, with our relationship with the building owner that would kind of get in the way of this good decision to renew?
No, no, I appreciate you highlighting that because it's just an opportunity for me to say how good the partnership has been, and I think Terry Bohan, Principal of Community High School, could say a lot more, but I know in times of seeking space, if they had it available, they're more than willing to let us come in, even with the removal of the relocatable, they're giving us the grace period of the summer to get that out of there, so we could, they're just a great partner to work with.
Thank you.
Further questions from board members? Seeing none, the administrative recommendation is to approve the renewed lease with the state of North Dakota for space used by Community High School in the North Dakota Vision Services School for the blind building located at 500 Stanford Road for the period of July 1, 2025 to July 30, 2026. Jeff has made a motion for approval.
Second.
Second by Jay. Second by Jay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Flynn?
Yes.
Clevon?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Pomacino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item 5H is the Finance Committee report. We'll go back again to Mr. Baumbach.
Yep, thank you. Finance Committee met here on June 2nd, covered three different topics, two of those for what was requested action, and now is in front of the board for action, and one of those is more a discussion and topical. The first would, actually was led by Dr. Glatch, so I'll hand it over to her just to run through the consideration of mental and behavioral health director component of the Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Brandon. You'll see in the memo that there is a positional request, it's actually more of a positional change form. I think you've been pretty familiar with our past strategic plan, which is being, has been rewritten, is ready, I think, to bring to your attention at our upcoming retreat. But in both of those plans, there is a significant amount of time and attention spent on mental health and wellness, and a broader umbrella being behavior, behavioral health and wellness. As we do when we lose staff, we evaluate the position from which they vacated to see if it's still relevant, to see if we need it, to see if there's a different way we could absorb it. In this instance, there was a loud cry from a variety of people to actually elevate the position. We could spend a lot of time, and I'd be posed, poised to take questions on the status of the continued mental and behavioral health and well-being of our youth on the heels of the pandemic, but this portfolio is one that really, in our opinion, requires directory level status. It would allow for supervision to occur of our counselors, our social workers. It would allow for some merging of programs in tandem with our special education department. You've heard over the course of the years, some of the cries from our classroom teachers, and even our special education staff themselves, for help when the needs of the students might exceed what our capacity is. So really, we're looking to put this, this whole portfolio underneath the umbrella of somebody who has a high level of expertise, would be able to make directions and directives and that sort of thing. In the end, when you look at the cost differential, it's a prediction of approximately a $13,000 and change increase over the current salary of the mental health coordinator position. So that is the request that's in front of you right now. That was the Cliff Notes version. I'd be happy to take questions. Matt Bocky was also part of the effort.
Anything else to add from Finance Committee members? Dr. Lund?
The only thing I would add is that that position will then go on to the director's salary schedule, because they become a director, so.
Okay. Any questions from other board members? Amber?
Because of the timing of this position, how does the, how does it fall into the negotiations timeframe?
Yeah, so in essence, this is, and it states that in the memo, this is based on kind of current numbers, so I imagine the percentage of increase would align accordingly with this position, whatever that negotiation, however it pans out in the end, for the directors writ large. This was based on comparisons with other districts who have similar positions, also on the number of days that would be required to carry out the deliverables of the portfolio, and so that's where the placement was made on the current director's schedule in general. So there was some thought put into that placement. I think I answered your question?
I'm just, I'm wrestling, I'm 150% supportive of this. I'm just wrestling because of the timing of it. You know, if it's, if this, if we're at current market value, and that's the salary that's being proposed, and then someone could potentially a month later have an increase, I just wonder about if we're, if we're, if we should have an adjustment. And I just am thinking out loud. Again, fully supportive of that, but if we're already at current market value, and someone could potentially have a whatever increase a month later, I don't know that.
I understand what you're saying. The other, the other way to look at that is that we compare market value to other districts that are also typically give annual increases of pay, so I think it would probably align accordingly that way.
I would say normally, too, there's common practice within our administrative processes that if someone is hired in the last three months of the fiscal year, they will not be allowed the step then, because they weren't there for the year of experience to deserve the step. So we kind of have a bar there, and I would think with the timing of this hire, we'd be really starting new on July 1, with whatever raise is negotiated through the director's
Further questions, Amber, or? Any other questions from other board members? Dave, anything on the phone?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You answered one of my kind of long-running internal questions, what makes a director a director? And I just heard the answer to that, so thanks for the further education of a new board member.
Dr. Lund?
I move approval of the position as outlined.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and a second by Jay. Any further discussion? We will take a roll call vote.
Flynn?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Clevon?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Pomacino?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Back to Mr. Baumbach for part two.
Yes, thank you. I'll consider what the next topic that was discussed in the Finance Committee was a consideration of recommendation, or recommended building fund ending fund balance for fiscal year 26. This body has not yet heard this, but every person, maybe minus Terry, has heard this at the table, given the Facilities Committee, and then Finance Committee went through it one more time. You'll find included in the, in the board material is the, the presentation packet that Jonathan Elwine provided at the Facilities Committee, but largely, the premise of this request, it came from board members embraced by administration, has come back now for a final and formal approval, is to provide guidelines to a building fund minimum carryover balance. How much should we keep in there, just in case, that rainy day fund? And so through Jonathan's good work in a annual survey of buildings, a computation of that leading into a recommended building fund carryover balance, for fiscal year 26, it's recommended to be 1.62 million. Happy to stand for questions on this. I know Jonathan's here to stand for any questions on that, but I didn't, I think we've heard it, so I would stop there, unless you want us to make the presentation.
No, I'm very confident in this, and thought about it over the week. I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation.
And I accept it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Pomacino?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Clevon?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Onto item number three, Mr. Baumbach.
Yes, thank you. This was not an action item here, it was more of a discussion. It was brought up at Finance Committee by administration, just to reaffirm a commitment, that commitment being that the school district would provide student transportation services to and from the Career Impact Academy. The conversation then largely entailed the nuances of such a decision. We have busing services provided to our district through Valley Bus, but when quoted a shuttle rate for a regular shuttle, or two regular shuttles cycling to meet the level of service required by it, it really got to be possibly an unsustainable number on the budget. So then went to work, the administration, on different creative possibilities. The committee discussed those, which would include a blended model of where the Grand Forks Public Schools would purchase a bus and operate a bus alongside Valley Middle School, or Valley, sorry, that came out too naturally. Valley Bus providing a shuttle for the second block, because there would be a tight turnaround to provide all services, and then we even considered the of two buses being run by Grand Forks Public Schools. Ultimately, the committee found the sweet spot in that mix, which is that the Grand Forks Public School system would lease for three years with an option to buy a 77-passenger school bus to test out this theory that we would run one full route or shuttle that would go all day long between the two high schools and the Career Impact Academy, providing service alongside a single short route or shuttle just for the second block of three to provide level of service at the schedule. So there's a lot more context I could explain about how that building's schedule goes, but what I'm trying to connote is a blended model, where we would actually lease a bus, hire a driver, and operate a regular bus route, which is something Grand Forks Public Schools hasn't done in a while. But it might be smart, too, just given, that would provide us with a little more flexibility that could then perhaps do some co-curricular busing after school hours, or even over the weekend types of travel in not too far away cities, but, but near cities. So that was ultimately the conversation. Members of the committee could certainly fill in the gaps, so I'd be happy to stand for any questions around that.
Any further comments from other Finance Committee members?
I think the biggest point is this gives us most flexibility to look in the future, because we don't know what the busing need is going to be at Career Academy until we get through it a year or two. So this gives us that ability, plus it gives us the ability to have our own bus if we can use it for extracurricular activities.
Any questions? Amber?
Do we know yet what the recommendations will be to students? Like, would the recommendation be that they go on the bus as opposed to driving their own vehicle, or is it sort of any way you choose to get there is when you get there?
Great question. It'll be any way that you choose. We anticipate that, especially with our winter weather, there will be a large degree of ridership. The thing that will be butting up against that are kids that end their day there, or maybe are involved in activities, or some of our seniors' days end, school days end earlier than others, because they've already completed credits throughout the course of their other years in school. So it'll, it'll be a wide variety. But parking spots are always a premium as well, and again, you add in the winter weather, and we anticipate the shuttle will be widely used.
Questions from other board members in the room? Brendan, do you have something to add?
If I may, just highlight one more thing. As we try to figure this out, there's a lot of unknowns when you stand up a new building and new curriculum and, or additional curriculum. And so we're waiting on, we know the enrollment numbers, we're looking for the ridership numbers, we're trying to figure all that out. What's really nice is for the Career Impact Academy project, we were able to leverage the New Market Tax Credits, which brought in about $1.9 billion into that project that wouldn't have been there otherwise. A smaller component that we haven't talked about was the New Market Tax Credit Program is all about community benefit, driving investment into under-invested census tracts across the country. And associated with that is a small grant amount, $240,000, not a small number, but compared to the rest of it, for community benefit. We're able to use that grant to offset this cost while we figure out the best mix of student transportation. So as we look to lease, that gives us the flexibility to choose not to if something changes, but it'll all be helped along because of the New Market Tax Credit Program.
Thank you. Dave, any questions on the phone? Or comments?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further?
Just one more, and I apologize if it already got mentioned, with driver cost and everything, and a grant that's offsetting, offsetting some portion of it, do we have an idea what an annual cost is?
Just got to find my number on that. But I mean, you got the right mix here. We, we looked at the cost rate of the driver, we, we found a number that we felt positive about, that we can get a driver. It's a little bit more than what Valley Bus is paying currently, so we feel confident we'll be able to get that. It's the lease of the bus, and then even the purchase option. We ran all scenarios through. If I recall, it's, you know, it's, it's like $170,000 a year when you take both the bus, the driver, and then the Valley shuttle into the mix.
Dr. Lund?
I was just going to say, it was probably the cheaper of most of the options we talked about, including the, the Valley-only running, the whole thing was a lot more expensive than that.
Yeah. And then, of course, what'll come into this is you do have the New Market Tax Credit Grant, but then you can seek mileage reimbursement for routes run just a year in arrears, so it'll be nice to have the, do the grant cover the first year, because then we can go to the state reimbursement formula to help offset that. Furthermore, if we have a bus in our possession, we could use it for such things as like the central football team getting the ride over to Purple Arena instead of paying $228 just for that ride down the street, and then summer school routes as well. So we'll look for all opportunities to, to leverage that asset once we get it in our possession, too.
Anything further? Any other questions from board members? Okay. Seeing none, this was, no formal action requested on this item at the time, so we'll move on. Thank you, Brendan. Item 5I, consideration of real estate agency for building trades, Project House, one more time to Brendan.
Yeah. Thank you, members of the board. And actually, I'm going to call on Mr. Eric Ripley, who might be back in the tech booth here. This is his program, as you know, with the Career and Tech Ed. But each and every year, it's not always well-known, because our students build houses on a site that's not always the most prominent, but every single year, we have a class of students who will build a home under the instruction of Ben Moe, and then eventually will sell this home. We've, when we've sold the home, we've done it in a couple of different ways in the past, but last year, we settled on a process that I think worked really well. We put out a bid, a request for realtors, to let us know, respond to the bid in a number of different ways, the quality of service, the, the actual costs that we would incur. And so we replicated that process here again for the, the home that was built this year. We got two responses, one from Career Real Estate, that's Tim Bernhardt, and then another from Oxford Realty, Amy Knudsvig. We go through those proposals, and we rate according to the RFP evaluation criteria. That's the table we've provided you in the memo here, with a little bit of weighting, and you can see how the numbers came in. Tim had also put in a bid last year, didn't get the opportunity, but came back again. We were happy to see that. And Amy is, oh yeah, there's probably a delay on that video, but Amy is the first year, so we're excited for getting her participation. At this point, I've said everything, but if you'd like...
You have. You have. I'm just trying to figure out how to run four cameras at once when I'm not in the backroom, but no, Mr. Baumbach has, has overviewed the memo quite well. But happy to be here, and happy to be running the cameras tonight, but I'm standing for questions that you have about this concept or proposal.
Right. And to be clear, that based on those results and, and the matrix within the memo, is that it's our recommendation that the board take action to accept the bid from Career Real Estate, or Tim Bernhardt, to help us market the CTO, CTE home this year.
Any questions or comments from board members?
What is the commission that, that the approval would carry?
The proposal is 5% in the, in the recommended one.
And, and the approval does, that is the lowest commission that was submitted?
Of the two proposals received, yes, it was.
Thanks.
Is that the total commission that would also include paying out a buyer's rep?
Correct. 2.5 on each side.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Lund?
Of approval.
A motion for approval of this item, second from Dr. Hodak. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Manley? Hodak?
Yes.
Clevon?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Pomacino?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
HS, zero, no, one absent.
Motion passes. Item 5J, I said one more time, I meant two more. We're going to go back to Mr. Baumbach for one more item, consideration of requests for proposals, selection for athletic apparel.
Yeah, thank you. I get to hand it off right away to one of the two most patient people in the audience this evening. Thank you. Director Beermeier here has led a fantastic process with, with a great result, so I'll let him tell you all about it. Director Beermeier here has led a fantastic process with a great result, so I'll let him tell you all about it.
Great. Well, thank you, Vice President Anderson and board. Thanks for having me. Appreciate this. I can say I'm extremely happy, to the point of being ecstatic with the process that we had. I told you a couple weeks ago that we had, you know, we had a lot of local vendors that are going to still be able to supply us, but we had two big hitters around the area, and they came back with some phenomenal proposals. So, you know, as the memo states there, I'm not going to read all that, but I do have some comments. You know, back on May twelfth, the regular board meeting, the school board has notified that the administration will be soliciting proposals for the supply of athletic apparel for the district-wide athletic programs. The purpose of the RFP was to determine an exclusive supplier for all competition-related apparel, including the possibility of brand exclusivity, along with purchasing equipment. The two companies were extremely competitive. I can answer questions on the nuances of it. The customer service that we've dealt with, with both companies, is phenomenal. We knew that. It came down to the incentives, the packages that they put together. I can also say that it was very difficult to compare apples to apples as the packages were very different. The terminology is very different. So Tony Beena, Tyler Nelson, and myself, we put the better part of two days going through this and just trying to analyze it, working with Brandon here to try and determine, you know, how do we figure this all out? And it really kind of came down to really project out for five years what this contract is going to be, and in the end, hands down, it came down to BSN with the brand of Nike. So our goals were to provide with this contract, we were trying to streamline everything that we do, get one representative to cover most of our products that we do, provide us with some unwavering and committed support to our coaches. I think we nailed it. We already have that, we're just going to enhance that. We wanted to provide highly competitive pricing for all of our aspects of apparel and equipment. Again, they nailed it with the pricing and the incentives that we have coming up here. In other words, we found that contractor, we found that brand in BSN and Nike, and it's not to take anything away from anybody else, but they were head and shoulders on our, our coaches, our district, and even the way that we're going to be able to promote some of our team stores for our parents and our players with incentives that they're going to get and the branding and the pricing. It's really phenomenal. So I am super excited, you know, to recommend BSN and Nike as our new exclusive five-year contract for our apparel product. But I'll take questions.
Questions for Mr. Beermeier or Brendan? Amber?
A quip. Is it a coincidence that you're decked out in Nike today?
I am, really? Partly, no. Yes?
Does that company have a presence in North Dakota already? I mean, do they do serve other schools in the same capacity?
They do. They have a large presence in Midwest of the United States, and I'll just introduce him right now. So Tom Pachet is our local representative from BSN. He lives right here in the greater Grand Forks area. He's been working with our schools for, can I say decades? Not to put him on the spot, but for a lot of years, and served us well. And so did the other company. It was really difficult. The customer service, as you can see on the point system, they both, they're both extremely, extremely well, and they focused on customer services, what we wanted. It really came down to, again, what were those incentive packages? What were the, yeah, all the details of all those little apparel pieces and uniform pricing?
Other questions from board members? Amber?
Just a point of reference. I have been a part of a lot of these where we've had a variety of different vendors, and I always think it goes above and beyond an extra mile when the vendor actually comes to the meeting. And like, obviously, you know, we're probably going to take the recommendation, but I think it just shows value in that partnership. And there's been times where, like, we haven't heard from some people, and we're giving them a contract, and certainly schedules matter. But I do just think it's important when those partners come and they show up to board meetings, so just kudos to that partnership, so.
Yeah, appreciate that with Tom being here. And again, it just, it just shows, Tom is here, I mean, we see Tom in our buildings, you know, weekly. And that's one of the things that I talked about, both vendors, is I want you in our buildings, building a relationship with every one of our coaches, with Central and Red River. And another piece that I have to point out is, you heard me say, middle school is a priority. Middle school has, we have some neglected resources with middle school, and BSN came through and put money directly related to middle school equipment and middle school uniforms. So that really hit me as like, thank you very much. But for Tom being here and everything that BSN put forward, I can't tell you enough how satisfied I am.
Any further questions from board members? Sherry?
Congratulations for getting this done, but of course, new board member here, I'm going to ask some questions, and I appreciate the vendor being here as well. First of all, in those incentives, what are professional services that it's listed as and professional services as one of the incentives, if I could have that explained?
So part of professional services is customer service, but also one of the things that BSN package put together for us with professional services that the other company didn't do was we have our logos pretty well set, but I can also tell you that our Knight Rider logo is a little bit out there. So they have a company that helps with logos and determining what do you really want, and let's coordinate that. So we're getting to, you know, you don't have to have just one logo, like U&amp;D has a couple, but let's get to a systematic way of deciding what our logo is. So that's one of the pieces of a customer service and professional service that they're going to put together for us.
Thank you. Another question that I have is one that I asked last time when we were discussing this also. What if there is something that's not available through the company, or what if the coaches or parents complain about the quality of an item, equipment, et cetera? What happens then?
Well, first of all, if, on the question of what if something's not available, so what BSN and what Nike want is they want the first shot to give us the best pricing. If we find something that they don't have, which we talked about in an example of hockey, Bowery equipment, hockey uniforms, those are something that Nike doesn't provide. So those are the things that we're still going to go local. We have that great relationship with Dorels. We're going to continue with them. When it comes to things that they, the quality, I'm not so sure I'm necessarily worried about the quality because when we look at the products that they priced out with Nike and Under Armour and Adidas, these are the three best out there. And when we pick Nike, it is by far the best quality out there. So I think we're going to be, we're going to be, we've covered our bases there, but I also want to say when it comes to sub-varsity, we're going to get more bang for our buck because BSN has their own sublimated uniforms and equipment. Well, we're going to get more for our value that way, which is part of the package. So we're not going to spend, if you can believe it, I mean, football uniforms are two-hundred dollars a uniform. We're going to get middle school uniforms a lot less at a really good quality. So I'm not concerned about that quality piece.
And this is considered an annual five-year contract? Is that what I'm hearing? And is it an actual contract?
I believe it's a contract, and it's a five-year contract, but I'm going to kind of pass the baton over to Brandon Baumback?
Yeah, I mean, we specified a request to that extent. I haven't seen the contract yet. That would be the next step in that, but yeah.
So that'll go through our legal to make sure that we're covered both ways and that we have that, everything that's understanding about the things that we're saying. So that if we didn't, for hockey, needed to go, the vendor understands that as well. I would expect that that's all spelled out.
Yeah, I would believe so, too. Yes, we'll make sure of that. And the five-year contract seems like, well, it's just an easy five-year number. That's, we are on about a five, six-year rotation of our uniforms, so it's kind of intentional with this piece. So everyone will get through their uniforms, and we'll see where we're at and do this process again.
The last one is just more or less a comment that I would expect, hopefully, Mike, from your department, that you would track and then the savings that this is doing for us, the conveniences that's happening, the efficiencies, and then would report that back to us.
Hundred percent. I will do that. We have the projected, what I think might happen, but we will come back and tell you from where we started and what we were spending and what we're getting to what we did at the end of the five years, yes, hundred percent. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Amber?
I'm deciding to put my words into action because I know we have a coach sitting at the table here, and he's been nodding his head like he usually does on a lot of different things. But curious, Joe, about your perspective with uniforms and consistency and logos, or anything you have to add?
No, just going off of what Mr. Beermeier was saying, overall, from my experience, Nike has been a very good brand overall. I haven't had any problems. Central just went through our re-upping for all of our jerseys, which was a very expensive process overall. But having a preferred vendor like this is going to help in a lot of ways for coaches, I think. And, you know, just from a cost-saving perspective, I know most individual coaches are going to appreciate having this direction, having this directive, especially if it saves on the bottom line at that point, but agree with everything that Mr. Beermeier's been saying.
Anything else in the room?
It's been implied, but we are expecting a reduction of costs.
Thank you. So I did ask, you know, generally on our uniforms, let's just say uniforms, we're getting about a thirty percent reduction off the MSRP right now. So we need to get more. We're going to get forty percent off of that. And on our equipment, we get zero percent right now. We'll get a ten percent, what we'll call a rebate, that'll go towards future expenses. So those two right there are going to make some considerable savings.
Thank you. Dave, anything on the phone, questions or comments?
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further in the room? Hearing none, the administrative recommendation is for selecting BSN Sports as the district's exclusive supplier for athletic apparel, and Nike as the exclusive brand representative by district athletic programs. Bill has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Amber, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Lund?
Yes.
Pomassino?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Clevyn?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Hodak?
Yes. Sotter?
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS zero no.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Item five K is the GF Principals Association request to extend completion of contract negotiations. I'll turn to Mr. Baki for this.
Yeah, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, thank you. So before you, in the memo, you have explained for you as far as the process and where we're at. As most of you are aware, under sentry code, we need to go through this process, and this should be completed no later than July first, unless both parties agree to extend that beyond that deadline. And the board recognized GFPA Association as the representative organization on March seventeenth, and we have before you submitted a request from GFPA, a request to extend the completion of that contract negotiations until after the July deadline, and you'll see that request attached. The administrative recommendation is for the board to agree to extend that contract negotiations beyond the July first, 2025, if needed.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Jay?
Is there an expected deadline, or is it just open-ended whenever we get it done?
At this point, it would be open until completed.
And is the negotiating committee and the group comfortable with that open-endedness? Like, I'm a little uneasy with not having a deadline somewhere.
I guess I'm not sure that we can have a deadline, but-
I can tell you for twenty-two years, we didn't have deadlines, and then the law changed, and all of a sudden, we have deadlines. So, and we, I think the deadline is people want to get their contracts done. I mean, I'm sure the Teachers Association, Joe, would agree. So I don't think there's a problem not having a deadline.
I would further even offer that. I think that that's exactly it. All intent is to get it done. It was just in recognition that there's only one scheduled board meeting in June, and so what happens if schedules continue to be a challenge? You'll notice there that, haven't been able to get together with principals just yet, but it's on the books, and there's optimism to the whole conversation.
Any further questions from board members? Dave, anything on the phone?
No, thank you.
Jay?
And we don't think this gets in the way of the ongoing discussions with the GFEA. Like, I don't know if we can ask that question of them explicitly, but what is the sense of the committee on that? Or is it a non-issue, and I'm just, you know, making up stuff?
For the teacher negotiating committee, we're following the timeline appropriately. So I don't think there's anything that this proposal has to do with that one.
Dr. Lund?
Oftentimes, I can't say always, but almost always, there's three different negotiation groups going on at the same time, and then there's a meet and confer with the classifieds, so it's not unusual to, for that to happen. Because the purse strings are run by the state, and we have to wait for the state to be done before we even get a lot done, so.
Further questions? Seeing none, the administrative recommendation is for the board to agree to extend contract negotiations with the Grand Forks Principals Association beyond July first, 2025, if needed. I would seek a motion.
Motion.
Sherry moves approval, second by Jeff. Any further discussion?
With the if-needed clause, it kind of puts a little bit of brackets around it, so I'll vote in favor of the motion when it comes out.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Hodak?
Yes.
Clevyn?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Flynn?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Pomassino?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Five L is the Grand Forks Directors Association request to complete, or to extend the completion of contract negotiations. Back to Mr. Baki.
So again, the same exact recommendation, but for the GFDA, Grand Forks Directors Association. Again, the administrative recommendation is to agree to extend the contract negotiations with the GFDA beyond July first, 2025, if needed.
Dr. Lund has made a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jay, seconds. Any discussion?
I'll just kind of reiterate previous questions, which reach the exact same resolution we're going to get at, so I'm going to vote in favor of the motion.
Any further discussion? Dave, anything on the phone?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. See no further discussion. We'll take a roll call vote.
Flynn?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Clevyn?
Yes.
Pomassino?
Yes.
Larson is absent. Berger?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
HS zero no, one absent.
Motion passes. Moving on to item six on the agenda, six A is announcements. We do have one announcement underneath A, and that is that we will hold our annual meeting of the Grand Forks School Board on July fourteenth, 2025. So that is for everyone's awareness. Any further announcements from anyone? Sherry?
I would just like to take a moment to commend Terry Bohan, Principal Director for the Adult Ed Graduation and for the Community High School Chargers graduation and the open house. I think they were, the open house was very well-attended. I appreciate all of the things that Terry and his team put together for the graduations, as well as the open house. And I'd also like to commend the principals, Strandell- open house. And I'd also like to commend the principals, Strandell and Arison, and their teams for the graduations. Again, I think that they were done very, very well, and I've been through enough to know what I can compare them to. And I also just wanted to make the comment that I've made suggestions to Dr. Brenner and the administrative team about other things for improvement with the graduations, but very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements?
Just one of community note, the Ultra Sports Complex formal groundbreaking ceremony is June 27. And I think most of us got some kind of invitation to that, so that's kind of a big deal for the community, and hopefully can go there and celebrate something pretty grand.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Baki or Dr. Blatch? Okay, seeing nothing further. We'll move on to item 6B, for, board request for future consideration.
I would just like to see us have a... Have a discussion on the pilot programs that are coming forward because they're, they're really changing. You know, prior to that, they were all for housing for low incomes. They were all for bringing in many more, you know, in people to work, employment and that. Now they're changing to high-end apartments, and that's, and I think we need to have that discussion, especially when we watch the screen every Monday that we are here, and we're reducing money from what we're receiving from the federal government. So it would be maybe just for a discussion of how people are sitting, so that next committee that goes forward with that, whoever's gonna be on it, know which way we're leading.
Okay, thank you. Any further items? Jay?
Just to follow up from last month on process of commissioning the Central Pool.
I believe there may have been something in Friday Focus regarding that, but yeah, we could follow up on that also. Amber?
I have one point to make on bills. Perhaps our legal counsel could be present for that presentation, too, in understanding, like, if one entity votes no and the others vote yes, what happens to the money and who pays it and stuff like that. I also had a question about if we've settled on a doodle for the strategic planning... Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Any other items under 6B, board request for future consideration? Dave, anything from you on the phone one last time?
Uh, no, just taking good notes about the board members' requests. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 6C, school board meeting norms. How did we do? Amber?
I think we did really well. I think even though we exceeded the time, we asked really good questions and had very thoughtful discussion.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.